Oh, yeah.
We call the meeting to order. Um, we do have a court here this evening, so we'll move on to 1.2 and please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item 1.3 is see new school board members and ceremony of both of office. So, Amy Ferris, Elizabeth Armstrong, Aaron Stacker, Eric Mesa, and Amy Wilson. So I've got the school board oath here that I'll be reading. And I've got instructions out of bounds. So, it is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This puts you and the other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for an equitable quality education of every student in the Casamario School District. As a board, we must be accountable to the community and we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. Furthermore, we must strive to work together and with the superintendent, administration, and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, will you please stand, raise your right hand, and publicly affirm your commitment by repeating the oath of office after me? I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district number 20204 to the best of my judgment and ability.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district number 4 to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you. All right, moving into number two, approval of agenda. At this time, are there any changes to the agenda as it's written?
Yes, there's one agenda item change for this evening. It will be 7.1 informational item at the end. And 7.1 and 7.2 down will move down one. 7.1 will now be the resignation of the superintendent of Casamario Schools as of January 30th, 2025.
30?
January 30th, or I'm sorry, June 30th of 2025.
Okay.
All right, with that.
Do we go, I also have a motion?
We'll vote on them.
And then do it, okay.
So with that, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Accept his resignation?
Yeah.
And I'll second the motion to add superintendent resignation as 7.1 under informational items on the agenda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carry.
And then I would like to motion to postpone what was now will be 7.2, the closed meeting to our regular school board meeting on, after we approve it, January 27th, 2025.
I second.
So we've got a motion, a second, and so now I think we can discuss this matter a bit. I would say that this was a recommendation by our legal counsel to have this closed session tonight. A closed session is an opportunity for us to hear all the same information in the same setting. It's a safe place or a safe setting to learn this information and to be vulnerable without the opportunity for public input or scrutiny in that moment, so.
To be clear, I don't think we should move it out of a closed session. I simply think we should just postpone it to the regular meeting.
With this being an informational item, where there'd be no action, just simply listening and understanding with the ability to ask questions, what would be the reasoning for postponing that?
Out of consideration for the board, I think it's important to get the board established with those responsibilities. And if there's not urgency involved with it, so I don't think it's respectful of the board to have it on the first meeting without having the opportunity for discussion previously between like new board members and perhaps their mentors and then establishing our officers as well. So if we keep it on as is, it would be whoever the elected chair is within minutes would be running a closed board session and want to make sure that they're informed of everything that entails and what is expected, as well as all of our new board members.
I think to that point, I think we are, if we do in the closed meeting, we have an opportunity to go over all the details. But more importantly, as we've invited our attorney and an investigator here, which not only we're being charged for, but also more importantly, that they've taken time with their family to be here tonight.
I can understand that. I think for this specifically, without the consideration of reaching out to board members, this is quite sudden, to expect them to do that and then not allowing board members to know that the attorney even was coming this evening, out of respect for their time too. I think it's just considered of the board to postpone this. And I have reached out to MSBA who agreed that it was reasonable to request that.
Can I ask a quick question? So my understanding, this is just straight informational, we're not voting on anything, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And to Mark's point, we have legal counsel present as well as the investigator present. So in consideration of their time, the taxpayer money, the investment of bringing them to the table, I think that should be in consideration. As far as respect to our duties as board members or foreseeable short notice, there's oftentimes the agendas aren't approved for until the three day notice that we're given. So this is obviously very standard operating procedure for how we navigate meetings.
True, but it's a very unique case also. So just to be considered respectful of everyone involved, I feel strongly that we should postpone.
So you mentioned that, you said something about the acting chair would have been able to go into this in minutes. But what would be the difference to the chair would be?
Somebody just entering that role may not feel comfortable proceeding with a closed meeting and then just the consideration of the board to allow time for our new board members and even current board members to review what's entailed with the closed meeting, why closed meetings are necessary, what's expected, et cetera. If it's not urgent, I think it's appropriate to allow everyone to familiarize with their roles prior to proceeding with a closed board meeting.
Okay, any further discussion?
I think as far as informational on what a closed meeting is, I think we could, we could explain that pretty briefly. But also, you're kind of assuming that the, I think we should leave it up to whoever is elected the chair to decide if they're comfortable proceeding with it.
Yeah, I'm just following the approval of agendas where we motioned to adjust the agenda. So even if the chair wasn't comfortable, I still need to consider the new board members and other officers. Moving forward, I think getting our roles and responsibilities figured out is the purpose of this meeting and unless it's extremely urgent, it doesn't call for action. I don't understand why asking to postpone it would be unreasonable or not considered.
I guess I'd like to hear from some of the new board members, how they would feel about that.
I'm open. Because all we're doing is listening and if I'm understanding correctly, we're not making anything, then we'll have time, if I'm understanding, to make those decisions. I mean, I'm open, so.
I do feel like it's a little bit rushed and it's, I mean, just it's a little overwhelming on the first meeting to be trying to figure out what a closed board, figuring out what all of these things are and going through all the steps. If it's just informational and it's not, there's no decision making, I'm okay with moving forward with it. But I, I do think that it's a lot in the first meeting and it would be helpful in the future to not like to know so that we are inviting legal counsel if we aren't sure we're going to actually have it so that we don't waste anybody's time.
It's me, kind of the same way, we're not voting or anything. At this point in time, I mean, I feel like we have a lot on our plate coming up, a lot of big decisions. I'm not sure postponing it's going to help us. I think we just need to move on and get things going possibly and the fact that legal's already here. I mean, if there's a real reason they'll saw us postponing it the next time, then okay. But if there's no real solution or doesn't help us in any way, I guess I'm indifferent.
So we have a motion and a second to change the agenda as it reads, removing the closed board session.
I just have one more thing. I did see down here that we are going to designate our legal counsel. And the relationship, the reason they're on there is because the relationship we've had with him over the years since I have been on here has been outstanding. And I would hate to, hate to do anything to sour that relationship by sending them back, taking away from their family and stuff, so.
Okay. So we still have a motion and a second that we'll need to vote on. So the motion in the second was to remove the closed session meeting item 7.2 as it was.
To postpone.
To postpone that to 7.2. So with that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same size, aye? So four, we went three, four, motion doesn't carry. All right.
Now we'll need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So now I need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I just got a question. But we didn't, we didn't adjust it to the new.
We did with the reservation.
So can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda? Thanks, Eric. All those in favors, state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. On to board organizational items, 3.1 election of officers. So this will start with nominations for board chair. And I will call for nominations three times before the actual election. So with that, I will open for calling for nominations for board chair.
I nominate Kate Ryan for board chair.
Do I have any other nominations for board chair? I will nominate Mark Torferson. And for the third time, do I have any other nominations for board chair? All right. I guess at this time, I would like to open this up for discussion, I guess, between the two nominees. I personally voted for or nominated Mark for board chair. He has got six years of experience on the board. He has been an officer of the board and he's owned a business for over 20 years in the community. He's retired, so he's got a pretty flexible schedule. Yeah. And I think one thing to note also is, you know, a really important aspect of a school board member is in regards to the superintendent. And one of our responsibilities would be to carry out the duties of the superintendent evaluation. And that was a, an exercise that we recently performed. And looking at that, Mark, there was 18 questions within that questionnaire. And Mark commented on 14 of those 18 questions, really offering the advice and guidance needed and warranted for that position. And that's something I, I really do respect in that regard, so. For, yeah.
I'll speak to my nominated Kate Ryan. Kate has been on the board, served on the board for now, we can say over six years. She has shown unbelievable, two years, I'm sorry, two years. She has shown unbelievable work ethic in how much she has put into the different committees that she has been working on. Her attendance at meetings for committees is impeccable. She rarely misses any, any of those. She is at many of the school functions and very involved in the community and working with Food for Friends, Experience Online PTA, helping out with all of the things that go along with the music program plays, supporting all of the things that are happening at the elementary school, robotics, all of those types of things and that she's really invested into what is happening in our schools and how it's also benefiting our community. So that is why I chose Kate Ryan.
Thank you for that, Amy. I can just speak to, it is a hard time to take on this officer role, given the circumstances that were just announced. But I do feel that my commitment to making things better and working as a collaborative team will help enhance our board, communicating openly and being available for everyone. And then also like Patrick said, the relationship with the superintendent. And there's been multiple instances I've reached out to Mr. Ins and met with Mr. Ins to stay on the same page and reached out to MSBA in close contact with a lot of the stuff that we go through to ensure that we're doing it as it's recommended in the most ethically and morally responsible way. So thank you for considering.
Just, Kate, do you recall how many comments you've made in the evaluation of the superintendent?
I don't, but I did give him live feedback, if that counts for you, Patrick.
No. We only have what we can measure, right? And so there was four in that evaluation of the 18 questions. And just knowing how important of a role that is in to maintain that relationship and that feedback, you know, even in my own personal experience with employers, right? Like those evaluations are incredible.
Are as important as the actual relationship. If you have a close relationship where you're offering constant feedback, there's not a lot that needs to be said. But if you weigh that heavily, that's okay, that's a personal decision.
Today, I honestly wasn't, I wasn't really thinking too much about being the chair. But I was felt led to like, I was nominated that I'd want to inform some, especially some of the new board members on some of my experiences in life. But then when I got here and I saw this, I feel I know I was led to this, to tell you about some qualifications, I think I have. It's like Patrick mentioned that I have been on the board for six years. I've had a lot of experiences. I feel it took a few years to feel like I wasn't drinking from a fire hose. And I think we can all, ones that have been on, you know, have a little experience, they can relate to that. Now, I have served on about 80% of the board committees. So I have kind of an inner, inner experience with those. I chaired a couple of them. But I currently serve as, actually, I currently serve on the executive board per se, which is, if you guys don't know, then you guys, it's the schools advocating for fair funding. And what that is, is basically a lobbying group that we pay dues to, to basically advocate at the legislative level to, to get fair funding to our district. Some of the biggest experience I think I've had as far as on the board, that I had the pleasure to serve on the board during the COVID pandemic. And I don't, some of the new people, if you were attending meetings and stuff, and that was probably the most challenging part of my career in the school board so far. And Amy can attest to that also. But we, we get there heroes or zeros. And it's, I tell you, if you want to see how strong your feelings are, you would, we found out really quick. So, so in my personal experience, Patrick mentioned that I did have a, I created this construction business, actually over 20 years. And, and that job, not at all, had to make some pretty tough decisions, especially when it came to employees, some of the, some of the business aspects dealing with customers and my family. So it was, it was, it was, it was, I had to make some tough decisions on how much time I'd spend with my family. Because if anybody knows like the construction business in the summertime, I mean, 16 hour days were, that was pretty common when the weather was good. So some other experience I've had, work experience, other than my business, I was actually a police officer for about a decade in my, in my, where we lived previously. That role, I learned to navigate some pretty complex and fluid situations. And I learned we served with objectivity and compassion. So I, that was, that was some of the most learning experiences in my life. So I hope I took the good ones and, and try to use those today. Talk a little bit about my relationship with superintendent. Ted and I have a pretty strong relationship. Ted did share unsolicited that he appreciates the working relationship that we have between myself and him. We've, so far we built what I believe is a pretty trustful relationship and, which means that we're pretty accountable of each other, so. I feel our personalities and strength would foster a relationship that would have the ability to accomplish all the tasks before in front of us. Now, I know we got a, we have a letter from Mr. Ins, but I will not give up hope until the last day, so. Now, I know most is familiar with the Strengths Finder program. Some of the new board members know what that is. Okay, great. Now, as a district, we put a ton of importance in that. We saw the value of that program. We kind of did a, kind of a trial with some of the admin staff and stuff. And we saw the value of it and how we can find each other's gifts and help use those gifts to work together to accomplish greatness. We, 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 we saw the value in it so much that we decided to do it district wide. It was a good investment. I mean, I don't know if you remember the number on it, but it was a good investment and I think it's a well investment. So why I'm telling you this is, I'd like to talk about a couple of, a couple of the strengths that they found that would suit me or some of the strengths that I have. So the two ones that stuck out to me are the, first one is an achiever. So the two ones that stuck out to me are the, first one is an achiever strength, which, for those of you who do know me, if I say I'm going to do something, I do it 100%. I have a work ethic that I grew up, growing up on a small family farm. Basically, my parents just told me, this is me, that you can, with enough heartburn, you can accomplish anything, so. But more importantly, the, the strength that I think is going to be the most applicable, applicable call, vocabulary is not mine. But is, is the command strength. Now, it's my understanding, this, and I'm, I want to start off that I'm not trying to boast, that is not my intent. My intent is to be informational to everybody, to, so we can make a decision. But the command strength is actually very unique. And it's my understanding that to the helpful district, I'm the one who has that. And I didn't quite understand what it was until I actually looked into it and I thought about it. And somebody asked me, I believe it was our former superintendent, he's like, what, what, how do you see that strength? And I tried to remember exactly the words, but it went something like this, and I want to read it here. "It's like when I see a situation of importance and it's headed for imminent disaster, and I get a feeling that comes somewhere deep inside me, that forces me to get mauled. I'm willing to do anything possible to get the train back on the tracks, no matter what the cost to me. Ultimately, the common good is what's most important over my personal needs." And just the last thing I wanted to say is, to the new members, and maybe a reminder to the current members or the older members, that a good attribute to a board member that really is honest and to the community, themselves and the district, is that we come to every meeting with an open mind. We hear, we want to, we hear all the information and we, we make a decision after that, so. That's all I got to say, thank you.
I feel like I have to follow up now, Mark. I think that my two years speaks to my professional self and my effort on the board. I have, we're into legislators attempting to improve our insurance issues with teachers, hoping to get a bigger group and lower the cost for educators. I have been to three of the strategic meetings. I have rarely missed any committee or school board meetings. Attendance is extremely important. And I'm in the schools. I, I want to know what's going on. I want us all to be well-informed to make the best decision possible. So, I, I mean, moving forward, I feel like we've done great work, but we can do so much more and we can work together more cohesively with increased communication and collaboration. And there can be ways to be a very effective board, and I see a really bright future for us.
I just want to respond to, and I'm not trying to degrade your company, but you mentioned that you spend a lot of time in the schools. From my, the way I look at things is, I purposely don't spend a bunch of time in the schools because I trust our admin staff, our superintendent, that they are doing a job to their best of their ability. So I don't want to, I don't come into schools to make administrators and teachers and principals feel uncomfortable that I'm like watching them all the time. So that's, that's just my philosophy.
And just to counter with that, from what I've heard in the community, the relationships that Kate has built in each of those buildings, due to her role as a mom, volunteer, all of those things. I have not heard one person say that she has gone into any of these facilities and acted as a board member that is there to check up on what they're doing. She is very much in there putting the work in and doing what is needed to ensure that our staff, students, and community can have success.
Amen.
I got a quick question for both of you, real quick. So, what are you, what are your plans to make us work cohesively, to work together as a team? That's what I want to know. Because it's going to, you got three new people in here, you got different personalities. What do you, what do you see as a leader that's going to motivate us to work together as a team?
I guess the first, the first and most important thing, I believe, is actually getting our relationship built back with our superintendent, maintaining a quality person in the job. And I just want to maybe get off topic a little bit, but the, there's, there's a few of us in the room that went through the interview process for, for Mr. Ins. And that process was exhausting. And it, it got down to the last couple candidates. And it was, it was like, I was just praying, it's like, let's make this so obvious who our superintendent should be. And it was, it was a unanimous vote. There was zero hesitation that this was the right person for our district to make it grow. So my most top priority is to build that relationship back with Mr. Ins. I mean, if we've, we've had, this would be a third superintendent in a few years. Imagine trying to find a qualified candidate with turnover like that. Anybody in their right mind would be like, there's something going on there, I'm staying away. So for the betterment of the district, I think we need to try to rebuild our relationship. And I truly believe it's eligible with Mr. Ins. So that's a top priority, but it all starts there. A good superintendent works with the board to make it a cohesive board. I think just getting to know everybody, I build relationship with, with the professional relationship with, with the other board members. And I really, it's, I really do view you guys as friends that have been on the board before. So it's, it's just a matter of finding people's strengths, finding how to build people up instead of tearing them down. But just coming with an open mind, I guess, that would be my objective, maybe my plan.
For us to work as a team, what I see would be beneficial and what I've learned from my experience filling in for Zed and, and going to the MSBA conference, is that nothing that comes to the board table should be a surprise. Things should be well-thought, it should be run through committees. So I would adhere to using our committees as they should be to be able to review the information and give all the board members ample time to be well-informed when they're making decisions. They should feel good about decisions they're making and not feel like they're chasing information, which sometimes it can feel like. So beyond that, again, now we will have a search for superintendent, which is a massive undertaking. We also, in a few months, will be entering into negotiations with our teachers. And we're in the middle of redoing a complete strategic plan. So we have a lot on our plate, and I feel that my organization and my communication can build our board in a way that we can utilize people's strengths. They feel welcome and open to have discussions. Nobody is criticized or condemned at the board table. We will operate only with respect and kindness towards each other. And we will consider how we are presenting information and be mindful to allow board members to fully understand the things they're voting on and the actual, how our district's actually doing. Not on our best day, but just on an average day, what the district's needs are. Having that insight, I think, is so valuable as a board member. And then also just remaining objective and completely impartial, so we can conduct business and everyone is free to bring their opinion and their ideas because we're a representation of the community. And it's really important we're all able to do that without feeling criticized or being nervous to speak up. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Hey, I noticed you mentioned about taking things to committees and being transparent with the community about that. Now, there was a couple of meetings ago where actually, there was a, there was a motion made in a second. And I was the only one that spoke up about, let's, let's, let's put this on the table and run it to the committee. So I, I totally get the value of that. And, and that's been one of my, one of my pet peeves is when we don't do that. So I totally agree with you on that. There was another point that as far as building relationships, and you're exactly right. That's, that's what CAM, schools are all about. It, it was, it was a couple of meetings ago, it was around the Thanksgiving, that I, I posed a question to our student representatives. I said, so what are you most thankful about, about the district? And my heart melted when they said, we talked about the relationships that they feel that there's not a student in the school that doesn't have somebody that they can talk to, or they have made a relationship with a staff member or an admin, you know, either teachers, basically any adult. So it melted my heart, so I'm 100% on board with the relationships.
One more thing, I'm not talking about anything except for, moving forward, I, on the organizational video, MSBA suggested if there's two candidates, you can write down who you would like. Is that what we're planning? Okay, awesome, I wanted to make sure we did that, thank you.
I just had, I just had one more, one more thing to say. I just implore you guys to have an open mind. If you came up with a decision, I implore you to just reconsider. I think we need to look at this as taking all the pride away. We need to take, to really stand back and look what is best for the community. So, thank you.
Also in line with the video, they'll all come to me. You need to list your name as the voter and then the person you're voting for, and I will read them all aloud. Everything is read aloud, there's no secret ballot. Okay, in no particular order. Elizabeth Armstrong is voting for Kate Ryan. Kate Ryan is voting for Kate Ryan. Mark is voting, I'm sorry, Eric Mesa is voting for Mark. Patrick is voting for Mark. Aaron is voting for Mark. Amy is voting for Kate. And Mark is voting for Mark.
All right. Based on those election result, election results, Mark Torferson passed with a simple majority at 4-3. And you will take the chair.
Thank you, everyone.
We'll also move on to the position of clerk. I'll read, I'll read, or ask for a nomination three times. So do we have any nominations for clerk?
Kate Ryan.
Any other nominations? Can I second Kate? Yeah, I don't think we get a second on this, but I understand.
I'd like to nominate Patrick.
We have one nomination for Patrick. For the third time, the last time, is there any other nominations for clerk? It will open up for discussion and encourage anybody to speak any qualities that these candidates might have that you feel is impervious to running a good office for clerk.
I second everything I said a little while ago.
I actually, I was going to nominate Patrick. Patrick is a person in the community that's, is grew up in his, his whole life. And if you talk to anybody on the street that's from here, will know Patrick. And they will have nothing but good things to say about Patrick. He's very professional. He's relatively well-spoken. But he has, he has a business sense. He has good organizational skills. But more importantly, just if you want to look at his personality, probably one of the most caring fathers that I've observed, so. And that's, in, in this, this educational system, that's, that's an important quality to have, so.
I know, I'll say Kate doesn't have as many years as Mark, that's kind of why I lean towards Mark, but I know she's incredibly dedicated. I mean, everybody who knows her, she works incredibly hard. She did an amazing job at PTA. She's everywhere. When I first met her husband, I knew it was her husband, but I just referred to him as, you're Kate's husband. And he laughed, and he was awfully proud of that. And I think that's, there's a reason he's proud of it. She does a lot for the community, a lot for the school, and she's dedicated to the school and making it better, so.
So I'm kind of a people watcher. And at football games, I got the opportunity to sit behind Patrick a few times. And I thought it was very interesting. I don't think there was one person that walked up to him that he didn't smile or talk nicely to, and I could hear his laugh. And then also just, I, I had some questions about what was coming up. He was more, more than happy to explain the processes to me, and I appreciated that. So that's why I nominated him, because I feel like his personality is one that he fits well. He's been on the board for a while, he's, I think he's, was treasurer for a time. So he has some experience in, and so that's why I nominated him.
Thank you both. But yeah, I'll be, I don't have much more to add. And I know as far as years of service and things of that nature, Kate and I joined at the same time, so we're...
We're not the newbies anymore, though.
To the day, we, we get it, so. Yeah, I appreciate the nomination and I look forward to serving you if that was the board's choice.
And I did forget to mention that I have served on some of the boards with Patrick. And he is very, he, the details he comes up with, some of the things that we maybe not have thought of that he expresses, and he added, adds a ton of value to those committees, so.
I just wanted to add about Kate, just my interactions with her and working on PTA with her, is that she's just very dedicated. And if she says she's going to do something, she goes headfirst into it and puts everything into it, which I think could be really useful for us.
Any, anyone else have anything to say? Okay, that was the last call, so let's pass out the ballots and we'll go ahead and same procedure as, as last. Just write your name and who you're voting for.
Again, in no particular order, Aaron votes for Kate. Patrick votes for, I'm sorry, Eric votes for Patrick, right? Yeah. Amy votes for Kate. Elizabeth votes for Kate. Patrick votes for Patrick. Kate votes for Kate. Mark votes for Patrick.
Congratulations. The majority voting for Kate, Kate will be our new clerk. The next position and the last position is treasurer. This, this is a pretty important position. And they were, I want to say hand-in-hand with the business director, but they, they do, that's one of their duties is to take care of some of their, watch over some of the financials. But I'm going to go ahead and call for nominations. We'll do that three times.
I nominate Patrick Maderi.
I think we can skip the paper, and I nominate Patrick Maderi also.
Any more nominations? Any more nominations? I'm gonna call it again, any more nominations for, for the office of treasurer? One final time, any nominations for treasurer? Hearing none, I believe, do we, I don't think we need to vote on this? Okay, it's even Adam's decision, or no other candidates, so, thank you, Patrick. Moving on to 4.1, we're gonna need to approve the previous meeting minutes of December 16th, 2024, regular school board meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Patrick, do we have a second?
A second.
Thanks, Kate. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, vote same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to discussion items, 5.1, review the current school board committee assignments. Yeah, I think basically what, what I'll go ahead and do, or you'll send out an informational on what the different committees entail, and then I'll ask you guys for, if there's, if there's a preference on what committee you'd like to serve on, and I'll take that data, and then if new members could, maybe, and all members, if there's, if you wanna put some detail in, like, why do you think you'd be good on that committee? That would help me, because I don't really know everybody that well. So, because we wanna, we wanna, you know, try to assign people to the committees that would be served the most effectively. So, I'll, I'll send out a request to that, and if you can get that, and the sooner you can get it back, the better, because we need, we need to get these, these committees rolling, so. So I guess basically that took care of 5.1.2. And then I, the next meeting, we'll, we'll go ahead and I'll have those ready for you, and we'll get everybody assigned to a slot. Okay, we're on the action items, 6.1.
Real quick, Mark, the point behind 5.1.1 was to discuss regularly scheduled meeting dates and times for the committees.
Get right over there.
Rather, rather than the, so just have that in mind, obviously you're not in any way right now, but you do a monthly policy or a quarterly policy, and you, you know, that committee agrees on a time that always works, because I'm on a certain day, so just keep that in mind. We can do that.
Yeah, that's actually an excellent point, because before, recently, it was just, it was so sporadic. None of us could really depend on when we needed a meeting. So it seemed to me that was just tougher to get everybody organized. And I think if we have like a set every other month, whatever, we can kinda prepare our own schedules with that, so we can be more cohesive with that, so, thanks. Okay, so I think we're ready to go back on, or get back on track, the action items. We need to set proposal special and regular school board meeting dates and times for 2025.
If I could interject before, people make that decision. Normally the school board meetings start at 7 o'clock in the evening. Had the purpose to move on up to 5:30, it's selfish on my part. There's lots of times that, whether it be board members or myself, there's an activity going on that night, and we're not able to do them both. So the goal was to move things up to 5:30, so hopefully we could be done in time to attend a concert or a game, or whatever the case might be. And that would hopefully have less of an impact on people maybe having to miss meetings because their own child's involved in an activity. So that was the reason to move it up for 5:30. I'm up for 5, 4:30, 4 o'clock, but I don't know if everybody can get off work at that time. But it was just to move it up to hopefully make it more convenient, so. And again, sometimes if you start at 7, and the longer meeting, it gets to be long. And, you know, our goal is to have people attend our meetings and start in at 7. Sometimes people get home from work, they don't wanna come back out. 5:30 might make it more beneficial for them to attend a meeting. So that was just the reason for putting it out there. It's, again, it's up to the board to make that decision, but that was the purpose behind it, if anybody asked.
Thank you for that clarification, I really appreciate that. I just have a few concerns, and this is something that can be rectified after the month of January, but I know I, I personally coach and have already set my schedule, and I would be, have to say that I won't be able to make two of them because of that. And so with a little bit more time and notification, I would be more than willing to change. I would hate to have to go back on a commitment I have, especially as parents are trying to juggle their kids being in multiple activities and happy for them to try to find another time, because they've had their schedule for several weeks now. But in the future, I am open to considering it.
Any, which dates would, would, do you have issues with?
February 3rd and January 27th.
Okay.
One thing too, I think we need to consider is that generally, public input happens an hour before the regular scheduled board meeting, which would mean it would happen at 4:30 PM if we continued that, which might make it hard for people who want to participate in it to attend.
I remember at one point talking about shortening public input to 30 minutes, so that would help. But it's not officially written down, so another group was off.
And then I'm wondering too, I do appreciate starting it earlier, because late nights can be really difficult when the meetings go long. But maybe if we moved all of them to 6 o'clock and then did the public input like a half hour before, which is kind of a compromise in the middle of both, because currently they're at 7. I do think earlier is, is better. But 5, 5:30 is generally when, when the public and others are getting off of work. So I just wanna make sure they're able to attend if they'd like.
I guess I would like to make a recommendation. I think I really like the idea of starting earlier. And I think, and the other, I think Mr. Enns didn't mention this, but it actually opens this room up for more people who are out of here earlier. And if there, if there is any later informational stuff, but that's one thing. But I do, I totally agree with, with maybe with starting, you know, earlier. My recommendation is, we actually maybe leave the first few meetings at 7 o'clock for the regular ones, and 6 o'clock for special board meetings. But at a, at a later date, when we get settled, and maybe we can take a look at our schedules, maybe, maybe move up to the 5:30. I'd also like to discuss the public input. I know we changed it to having before the, the meetings. You know, I'd actually like to get a bunch of input from you guys, and see what you guys think about bringing it back into the regular meetings. I just, when we first did it, I thought, okay, this is a good idea. This is a really good idea. But my issues with it is I don't, I think the community members don't feel like they're really heard when they're only talking to one or two board members. And I, I know the concern was, well, if there's a big issue going on, we're gonna have a bunch of grandstanding and stuff like that. But I think, are we really doing a service to the public by not holding them during the meetings? And it, if you just look at some of the data too, we've had a lot less people coming to, and granted, there's different situations, but we've had a lot of other, we've had a tremendous amount of people not showing up for public input since we did change that. So I just want, you know, that's just a recommendation on, on my part. Like maybe leave the first couple months the same at 7, and then think about discussing later to change them, to get the rest of the calendar down, so. And I don't know if we have to approve the entire yearly calendar.
You do, so if you wanna stick with 7 on what, we would just make that change before we make a motion to approve it.
Does, other than Amy, does anybody have an issue with 5:30 in any of these three meetings? And Amy, remind me which, it was the January?
January 27th and February 3rd.
Just to put attendance out there, I also will not be able to attend the February 3rd meeting. So, just to clarify, I'm unsure, are we suggesting we're only moving a couple of the meetings, and then we're leaving the rest at 7 and 6? For the 6 for special meetings, 7 for regular?
No, I think other than the, the, I think just the January 27th and February 3rd meetings, and whatever, if there's something between there, we can leave those at our normal, normal time. And then the rest of the calendar, change it to 5:30 for both special and regular meetings.
Are we also voting for a two-year schedule?
Yes.
Is that something that we've done in the past?
No, it's new and again, obviously proposed, but it would help out, but it's still a schedule or a tremendous.
I guess I don't, I don't have any issues with it at all.
Even upon approval, you're saying what they can be added to.
You, you set the date and time, but if there's a conflict, you can say this, maybe we can do it at 6 o'clock or 6:15 or whatever, but we have to just make a way out there in advance. But you can't jump around, say we're gonna do these at 5:30 and these at 7.
It usually is. The only thing to do that is when the board doesn't change, the board won't change next year. So how, the same someone will be here for that schedule outside of the year.
And we all have lives, that we, things are gonna change, and we typically, we, we need a forum, basically. If there's anything on that, we have to have a forum, so. And if there's any issues you guys would have, proceed. I mean, I know we can't predict the future, but if there is something, but let me know, or Carlin knows. If there is an adjustment we can do, we will get to take care of, so. But we, that is our goal as a board, that we try to serve the community by having, having meetings that are productive and that we're, you know, basically attending, so. The, the public, they elected us to do basically one thing, and that is vote, so. Carlin, can we just amend these first?
The first two, January 27th at 7 PM and February 3rd to 6 PM.
Correct.
And anybody else wanna weigh in? Because we've only heard from a couple of you about, what are those times of work for your personal schedules?
I don't have a conflict at that time, I think it's a good idea to move up.
No, I like it, bedtimes with little kids is better, with two hands, instead of just one person pretty mobile.
And did we go to, during the, the community forum or whatever, to just 30 minutes?
I think maybe you could take your suggestion, put on the January regular meeting, and everybody can decide, yes, let's go 30, yes, let's go in the meeting, no, let's go out of the meeting, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we can, we can adjust the agenda or the, or the order at later times, so. We just need to get our calendar nailed down. If there's no, no further discussion, do I have a motion to accept the calendar as presented with a couple revisions that we talked about?
Can you clarify the revisions when we're doing the vote, if you don't mind? Just because all of them will be 5:30, right? After the last two?
All of them will be 5:30, we're gonna set a two-year schedule, except the January 27th and the February 3rd. We're gonna do those at our regular times.
5:30 for all the regular. Okay, and so are you saying all the meetings?
That's where I'm confused, is it all of them will begin at 5:30? Because what's, is that something that, I think that would be advantageous to make it simple too?
Okay.
Yeah, and just not?
Yeah, that was totally on me, I guess I did, I thought it was 5:30 there, so. And I agree, I think 5:30, yeah, and it does, maybe never, never else, nobody else gets confused. I gotta think about, is it a special meeting, or is it a regular meeting, 6, 7? So, is there, would there be any objection to changing that, is there any input on that? So 5:30 across the board, except for the first couple of meetings. Do I have a motion to approve? I think we?
We've got one.
Got one, do we have a second? Thank you, Kate. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then we just have some paperwork items left. We, 6.1.2, designate official depository. And I believe the name's changed, Alarius, Alarius Financial? But it's the same, same bank. We have a motion to continue to use those as our depository. Thank you, Patrick, a second? Thank you, Eric. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none? All those in favor, state aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 6.1.3, their next item, designate official legal counsel. And which is on here with Ratwick, Rosark, and Maloney, PA, which is our current legal counsel. Do I have a motion to continue them serving us?
Motion, I'll second.
Thanks, guys. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 6.1.3.1, and this is something that we, we basically vote on every year. It's basically the board authorized the use of Ratwick, Rosark, and Maloney as our designated legal counsel. The following positions are authorized to contact legal counsel, board chair, superintendent, and administrators who have received prior approval from the superintendent. And the reasoning behind this is, well, we, if there's any, we don't wanna spend basically any more money than we have to, because, and, and they're totally right. If they, if there's people calling them all the time, you know, they can't just do that for free. But it just makes things more simple, and it's, I guess, I don't see an issue with it, it's always been that way. And over the last six years, I don't think there's ever been any come up about, you know, abuse of who gets to call them, who doesn't, so. Do we have a motion to approve that?
I, I would like to suggest, actually, we revise that to, maybe not approval, but knowledge of. I don't think that any board members are reckless enough to just call them, but I also don't think that it's common practice to have to have superintendent approval prior to.
It'd be the superintendent providing approval to administrators.
But if there's a board member or administrator who felt the need to reach out, and then here would have to let the superintendent know they were doing, so I don't think we should take away that choice for them.
There's a different process. If, if the superintendent sees the issue, there's a different process for staff and our board members to reach out, and wouldn't be to our legal counsel.
Yeah, I, I just don't know that it's a common practice to have to have approval to be able to reach out. I don't know, I'm open to any other suggestions, I just...
I like this safety net, if you wanna call it that, for making sure the superintendent is at least aware and granting permissions for individuals to reach out to our counsel, just for fiscal responsibility reasons, especially if there's other avenues that can be explored should individuals need legal counsel outside of the school district.
Do we have a? We're, see, we're not really in the discussion order. Do we have a motion to approve this? 6.1.3.1.
I'll make a motion to approve 6.1 if we have 3.1.
Thank you, Patrick. Do we have a second? Any other discussion?
I just wanna say that in general, previously when reaching out to MSB with questions, they've encouraged me to reach out to legal counsel. But I don't feel that we have that ability to do that. I understand the concern with finances if we need it to. I just don't know that it necessarily needs to be authorized if it's recommended. I do think it's important for the superintendent to know, but as professionals, I think too, that we're mindful of the reasons or whether or not it was necessary.
I, just remember, Kate, that you always have a way to contact legal, and it's through your board chair or your superintendent.
Can I ask a question about that? So if it's as a school board member, and I feel like I need to talk to legal, but if I have a conflict with the super, the superintendent and the board chair, then how would I be able to do that?
That was something that you could bring up in a board meeting, and then... That was something that you could bring up in a board meeting and then the, the board can always vote on a, on a issue or if there's an issue like that, we can vote on, you know, if we feel like, yes, there's, if enough, if the majority feels that way, we can vote, say yes, you can basically talk to legal. I don't think that situation's ever come up and I hope it never does and that's, that's the goal of the next year, but yes, always feel free to talk to the superintendent, the board chair about anything you'd have to give in terms of that, so.
And I agree, I hope that doesn't come up, I just was trying to think through like, you know, kind of figuring out like what if this happened and we weren't able to reach out to legal counsel?
There's also legal guidance that can be offered through MSBA.
Correct, you can always contact MSBA. I know there's been some, some issues with that, but that's, that's, that's perfectly fine, you have 100% right to reach out to MSBA too, so.
I, so I would think if I, if I was in that situation, it would be a conflict of interest to go to legal counsel for the school anyway, so I would get my own. That's my two cents.
And, and that, that is also.
That's how I think about.
Well, generally on school topics, if you reach out to MSBA, they recommend asking your own legal counsel. It's for the district, it's not for personal, it's.
No, but you're, the only reason that you would have to go to them if you're, you have issues with the superintendent or if you had issues with the board chair, correct?
No, not necessarily.
I mean, you're going around circumventing them because you have issues with those two person, people, so that if you're.
I understand.
If it's a legal battle, I would want somebody representing me that was not involved with the school system, period. So I'm, I'm kind of lost of the argument.
I'm not suggesting a legal battle with them.
But I'm, I'm just trying to understand that.
Absolutely.
Where you're coming from.
So the wording would just change from, you need approval to, still you need to notify them.
And my experience is on the board now, this will be the start to my third term. There have been lots of times where I just have a question about how things are done and when you reach out to MSB when maybe the board chair doesn't know and that, I mean, that's okay because we don't know everything. And then MSB says, you should contact your school's legal to get that information. And so it is a common response from MSBA because of each different district has its own, the supersizes and its own policies. And so it's just to kind of make sure that we're abiding by those policies and doing things correctly, I believe.
And, and I guess I would say in that circumstance, if that was the advice you're giving from MSBA, that then you would channel that same question through the chair or through the superintendent, who is approved to go see legal, you know, because they can vet that then, right? Because if it's, that'd be the significance of that again.
It could like possibly improve in the, the future too. Just with previous experience, it's difficult, I think, maybe letting them know in advance because maybe if they've already reached out, they could forward that information, but getting the opportunity to work with our attorneys closely through negotiations, I found extremely beneficial. And even if it's just the same message, it's, it's valuable information we can use to make our decisions. Everything legally with school districts is kind of a drone beast, it's, it's different than the personal private sector of things. So I think you'll be surprised at how often that is part of the recommendation when you're asking MSBA general counsel about things that they suggest reaching out.
I, I, I think it's important just to have, you know, as few people with points of contact to keep things simple and more organized for our legal team. I know we're, we talked about maintaining a chain of command and I think that's important to any organization and I think, especially Aaron could talk to this, but the importance of maintaining a chain of command.
I think we do have a motion, I'm a second, correct?
There's any other discussion this time? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve 6.1.3.1? Or I'm sorry, any discussion? We'll take a vote, all those in favor of approving this, state aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Okay, on to the next one, and this one, probably going to have a discussion on the 6.1.4, established board salaries. Currently it's at 1,300 bucks for a chair and 1,000 dollars for members. Now, in the past, we, we've had some different amounts. I know that there were some times that we were really short on some funds because we wanted to try to maintain as much salary for the teachers as we could. So the board actually decided to take zero salary for a few years, I believe. I think if that's, in my opinion, it's probably not necessary right now, but I would ask that the board chair receive the same salary as the other members, so. So I guess I'll make a motion to, to approve that with the change of chair at 1,000 dollars as is other members. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks Kate. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 6.1, or 6.5, designate official newspaper Dodge County independent. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll approve.
Is there a second? I'll second. Any discussion? And just a reminder, we are legally updated to have a, happening. Hearing none, take a vote, all those approved, state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, state aye. Motion carries. 6.1.6, this has been on, this has been on the radar for a while. It's a resolution regarding status of school board members. And this is the one that, if you remember, we sent back to the committee and it just, and I'm the one that advocated for that, so that's on me for the, why we're doing it tonight. But I just wanted to make sure we were being transparent with the public, that we did actually look through this before we voted on it. I did have some questions and I think superintendent ins answered it just fine. It was more, more formality, I've always, I've always agreed with this, so. Do I have a motion to approve resolution regarding status of school board members?
So.
Thank you Patrick, do I have a second?
A second.
You can have it.
Thanks Erin. Is there any other further, any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're on informational items, 7.1, we'll be entering into a closed session pursuant to news release statute 13D.5 subsection 2B.